...differences and similarities of others comes mutual respect for those around us, and hopefully, a better world. I'm Kathy Najafi, host of Bridging Cultures. Goodbye for now.[11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01][11.01][music][11.01]
Happy to do my job. This is certainly one of them, to promote some individuals in the Commerce City that have proven their dedication and professionalism to the organization. And so I would like to bring up three individuals. I'll do so individually. None of them are Kid Rock, so save your applause till the end. And first is Damian Thompson.
That didn't work out well for you two.
So Sergeant Thompson has been with the Commerce City Police Department for just over ten years. Damian, or DJ as he is more commonly known, came to Commerce City from Adams County, where he was a KANAN officer. DJ has served in the Crime Prevention Unit, Special Services Unit, and currently instructs officer safety training. DJ has received several awards, including the Silver Star. And Megan Cordova?
So Sergeant Cordova has been with the Commerce City Police Department for seven years. Megan began her career in the records unit before becoming a police officer. She has served in several assignments to include field training officer, bike unit. She's one of our SSU negotiators, and was chosen to be part of the multi-jurisdictional sexual assault task force. Megan received the Chief's Unit Citation Award for peacefully resolving a barricaded subject, an award she is particularly proud of.
And last but certainly not least, Sergeant Aragon.
And Sergeant Aragon has been with the Commerce City Police Department for just over seventeen years. He came to Commerce City via Fort Lupton PD. Derek has served in several assignments to include investigations, auto theft task force, field training officer, and he currently instructs driving and firearms training. Derek was named Peace Officer of the Year by the District Attorney's Office in 2010, and has received the Medal of Valor twice. So Mayor, City Councilmen, these are your newest sergeants, and with your permission, I'd like to swear them in.
Absolutely.
And if you all will raise your right hand, by the book of authority vested in me, Chief Cleveland of the Commerce City Police Department, I hereby appoint Derek Aragon, Megan Cordova, and Damian Thompson to the grade of Police Sergeant. Your appointment has successfully completed all the necessary requirements of the position, and will comply and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which appointed, by doing and performing all manner of things pertaining to their office. Congratulations.
Yeah, bring your families up, whoever you have here. I know there's some support. Come on up. Congratulations to the new sergeants and to their families. I wanted to give a shout out to the chief real quick. Normally, this isn't how we normally swear in different officers. However, I like the format, and I think it really means a lot to this council, to have you guys come in here, and we're getting to see who's going to be our new sergeants, and how we're going to interact with them. But more importantly, it's all the residents that are here and that are at home watching on TV, that get to know who these folks are. And a lot of these guys and ladies, we've known throughout the years with interactions. It's nice to see who's getting those promotions. And, you know, then we know who's out there in charge, and we have a lot of faith. I have a lot of faith in the three people that were up here. So I like the format, chief, and it's great that our public can view it as part of our meeting, to see these swearing in. So keep doing what you're doing. Thank you. All right, thanks, everybody. Enjoy your evenings. I love the protection, but y'all don't have to stay all night. All right, next item on our agenda is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on the agenda for the public to address the City Council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you are here to speak on an ordinance or a resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that item is called. The City Council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are or before, or may come before, the City Council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I do have four people that signed up on citizen communication. However, I think they were just signing in, but I want to double check. It's all for the folks that are here for Phillips, and we will be hearing that later in the agenda, so it wouldn't be the appropriate time. And I'm assuming you were just signing in, so thank you for that. Since that is the case, I do not have anyone signed up to speak during citizen communication. But I want to ask, before I move on, is there anyone in the audience who specifically came here to speak during citizen communication? If so, raise your hand, and I'll allot you the three minutes to come in and talk to the council about your concerns. Saying none, we'll move on in the agenda. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They're presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are three items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda for further discussion? Saying not, I'm open for a motion on the consent agenda. Councilwoman Frank?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Will the attorney please read the titles?
Minutes of December seventeen, twenty eighteen, minutes of October twenty-nine, twenty eighteen, Resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero-five, Resolution consenting to the dissolution of High Plains Water and Sanitation Metropolitan District.
Thank you. Title's been read. I have a motion and a second. I'll call for the roll call. I can't either. It's not on our screens up here, so I don't know who we're missing.
But it's broke.
Tell me who it is. I'll publicly shame them. No, mine's not let up.
Mr. Mayor, your vote is seven aye, no, nays, the motion carries.
All right, motions carries for the record. Seven ayes, two excused absences. Brings us to public hearings. We start with conditional use permit zero-zero-two-dash-eight-seven-dash-one-nine, which is the Phillips sixty-six storage tank. I want to remind council to use the public hearing portion to ask questions, but wait until the public hearing is closed to express any opinions or indicate how you will vote. I'm going to open that public hearing and invite staff forward to make their presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. First of all, I want to wish a happy new year to you all, 2019. We do have two conditional uses tonight. The very first one is an amendment to one of our oldest ones in the city, case number CU-zero-zero-two-dash-eight-seven-dash-nineteen. It's an applicant with Phillips sixty-six Pipeline LLC for property along Fifty-S sixth Avenue, and they're proposing an amendment to their existing conditional use permit. So this particular property is located south of East Fifty-S sixth Avenue. It's located west of eighty-five Vasquez, and located east of Brighton Boulevard. It's surrounded by a variety of oil and tank farms, including the Suncor Tank Farm, Suncor Refinery, New Star Tank Farm to the north. And then to the south, it's located on the very, very edge of the city. This unshaded area, uncolored area down here is City and County of Denver, and then the old Dino sixteen-eighty-five is this little pink commercial site right there. The site is all currently zoned I-three, heavy industrial, approximately thirty-nine acres in size. The comprehensive plan does call this area out to be general industrial, our dark purple. That's our heaviest industrial designation for the city. And this is just an aerial that shows kind of what's going on there. So the majority of it here is a tank farm. We have, it's kind of spliced by the BNSF railroad line. There's actually no rail cars associated with this request, but it does kind of bisect the property. And then over here on the east is where the trucks come in to load up, and then they depart, then back onto Fifty-S sixth Avenue. And then their office administrative building is also over here on the eastern part. So this is just a side aerial, not an aerial, just a photograph from Fifty-S sixth Avenue, looking south and east. And then kind of behind, in this corner back here, is where the proposed new tank is to be located. So a little bit about the site, and a little bit about the request. So this is for a conditional use permit amendment. The applicant is proposing to add one additional above-ground storage tank. This particular property was rezoned by council back in nineteen eighty-seven from C-two to I-three, and then a CUP, the original CUP oh-two, was approved by City Council at that time for this type of operation. And in order to expand and build this, an amendment to the CUP is required. So this particular site, a product terminal has been in operation since after World War II. They started the construction on it. It opened in nineteen fifty-one, and then Phillips sixty-six took possession of the site. It does operate and contain a variety of fuels, gasoline, diesel, ethanol, biodiesel, butane jet fuel. It does operate twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. The loading and unloading of petroleum products is on two trucks, in peak season, about two hundred per day, and then through a pipeline as well. The site does have nine employees on site during one of three different shifts. So currently on the site, there are twenty-two storage tanks, and you'll see there the barrel capacity and also the gallon capacity associated with this existing site. The product is transferred to and from by a variety of pipes and valves and pumps. And then all of these continued storage tanks, the proposed storage tank, are all protected by EPA-approved earthen dikes around those. In terms of the truck access, again, that was off of Fifty-S sixth Avenue. There's three controlled electronic gates, so it's not open to the general public. There's a punch key card for all the truck drivers, et cetera, going in, and then they go into a seven-bay truck route rack where they then load up their facilities with fuel for the metro area and the front range. In terms of the pipeline, they do receive and distribute petroleum products on and off the subject property, and those are monitored by computers on a continual basis, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five. In terms of expansion, so the applicant is requesting additional storage tank, and if approved by council, that would go into construction this year, in twenty nineteen, similar to the existing. And then you see the capacity and the diameter, so a large tank, but in keeping with what else is out there. And this is strictly due to just the growth that's occurring in the front range and capacity issues. Even within Commerce City, we have some new seven-elevens that have the Phillips sixty-six brand at Fifty-S Sixth and Holly, and Hundred and Twentieth and Chambers, Ninety-Sixth and Yosemite. So as Commerce City and other cities grow, there's obviously a need for additional storage of petroleum. Now, on the site plan, you see the area here in red or pink is kind of the area that's highlighted for disturbance and where the new tank will go, again, in the southwest corner of the site, very close to the Rock Island Railroad and the Denver County line. You'll see along here, along this piece here on Fifty-S sixth Avenue, the applicant is proposing to do some improvements, including paving of their three access points. They're currently just gravel and dirt. And then they're also proposing to push their fence back and to do some landscaping improvements there along Fifty-S sixth as well. In terms of regulating agencies for this site, this is similar to the Sinclair case, if council remembers that, from last year, about mid-year. CD-PHE, air quality and water quality, regulate this type of use. The Fed's EPA, and then the Department of Transportation is in charge of pipelines. All those are regulating this particular site. And it is required to comply with all of these type of federal and state laws that are at place for this type of facility. In terms of safety for both personnel and customers, they do go through a rigorous safety for all their employees, and that's listed there at the top bullets. And then again, for the customers that come in, they have to go through a driver training course. They have to learn about the site. They have to take a test, and then it's fully automated equipment, is computer-monitored, and can be shut down on a moment's notice if necessary. So the Planning Commission did take a look at this. Their analysis was that this terminal has been in operation since nineteen fifty-one in Commerce City. The request would allow the applicant to expand their operations to build out and to bring their expansion into compliance with the Land Development Code. Operations have continually be compliant with relevant requirements, both at the local, state, and federal level. And the site is clean and facilitates safe operation of materials. Just two different outside agencies that I wanted to highlight. First one's from the Health Department, Tri-County Health. They did review the application. There was a question about it with its proximity to an old landfill site, that the applicant conducted methane study to make sure that there would be no potential effects from the methane. This applicant did complete that study. They did submit it to Tri-County. Tri-County reviewed it and approved it. They found no methane, and there's no other applications, or I'm sorry, comments from the Health Department on this application. And then South Adams County Fire Protection, obviously oversees this for the fire district, and you'll see that they are meeting their requirements for the International Fire Code and the National Fire Protection Association standards, and they do not have any issues or objections to this particular request. As of date for public content, staff has not been contacted by anyone from phone or email or in person regarding this request. And then back in December, this did go before Planning Commission. It was after a public hearing, Planning Commission voted five to zero to four this request to City Council with a recommendation of approval, subject to three conditions found within the staff report, and the applicant was fine with those three conditions. So with that, staff's available to answer any questions, and we also have a representative from Phillips here to address council as well.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for our staff at this time? Saying none, I'd ask if the applicant wants to come up, state your name and address for the record, and add anything that you may want to add to the presentation that staff has given us.
I want to thank the council tonight and the mayor for their time to hear this application, and Mr. Timms, and Fasika, and their teams on going through the application, helping us get to this point. Do not have any additional items to expand on the application, and apologize. Chad Pollak, Phillips sixty-six, Thirty-Ninth, Sixty East, Fifty-S sixth Street.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for the applicant tonight? Saying none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to come up and address the council on this matter? Saying no one? All righty. If there's no questions from the audience, from the council, for the applicant or for the staff, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teter?
I'd like to make the motion, excuse me, to approve public hearing CU-zero-zero-two-dash-eight-seven-dash-nineteen Phillips sixty-six storage tank.
I need you to state that that motion is for the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the findings and recognition of the Planning Commission. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Frank?
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, approving the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case CU-zero-zero-two-dash-eight-seven-dash-one-nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now, Mr. Teter, why don't you give me a motion on the approval of the conditional use permit?
Okay, I'd like to make another motion for the public hearing of CU-zero-zero-two-dash-eight-seven-dash-nineteen Phillips sixty-six storage tanks.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. For the record, there is six ayes, one nay on the approval of the conditional use permit. Motion is carried. Thank you, folks, for coming in tonight. Takes us on to our next public hearing. Conditional use permit one-one-six-dash-one-nine BASF. I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing. Same rules apply to my council, and I'd like to invite staff forward to make their presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This is for case CU-dash-one-one-six-dash-one-nine for BASF Corporation, located at ten-six-zero-one Fulton Street. Subject property is currently zoned I-three. Most of the properties that are located east, north, and south of this site are also zoned I-three. Properties just to the west are zoned I-one and P-U-D. The subject property is designated on the future development plan as general industrial, which does suggest the uses for I-two and I-threes on properties. This is a snapshot of the current aerial of the property itself. You can see there's an existing adhesive manufacturing property, development on the site already. These are some glances from Fulton Street, looking northwest into the property and looking southwest into the property. It's relatively a straightforward industrial site. The applicant is requesting approval this evening for a conditional use permit to turn a legal, non-conforming adhesive manufacturing use into a legal, conforming adhesive manufacturing operation. This property was annexed in two thousand and seven as part of the Northern Enclave Industrial Anexation, and again, the property is currently zoned I-three. Under the LDC, the Land Development Code, adhesive manufacturing is listed as a conditional use in the I-three zoning district. And prior to being annexed into the city in two thousand and seven, the manufacturing operation had CUP approval from Adams County in nineteen ninety-one, and the current occupant BASF purchased the site in nineteen ninety-seven. So just a quick snapshot and overview of their operation. Again, the adhesive manufacturing has been ongoing on the site since nineteen ninety-one. The property is roughly twenty-point-three-nine-nine acres, and the existing building on the site is a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. They do have a hundred and forty-five employees on the site. They have three existing access points off of Fulton Street, and they have one existing rail spur from the Union Pacific Railroad Line, and the facility does operate twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. The immediate need for the CUP approval is the applicant would like to expand their employee parking in the northeast corner of the site, highlighted on the screen in red. This is a proposed parking area that would be located just basically northeast of the existing building. They do propose to include a hundred and seventeen parking spaces in that parking area. Other improvements that the applicant would have in the future, and working with the applicant, we've asked them to include future improvements with their conditional use permit, in an effort to not have the applicant have to repeat submittals to the city to be considered for conditional use approval. So they've included a future site plan with this conditional use permit request that would include possible future expansions of their facility, and the first one of those would be a potential forty-two thousand square foot warehouse expansion on the north side of the building. They've included other features that could be expanded on the site as well, and that being some inert gas tanks located on the south sides of the building, and they do propose to expand their existing retention pond in the northwest corner of the site. As with all cases, staff reviewed this out for referral and received back positive comments from all the referral agencies in regard in regarding compliance with those different agencies' requirements, mainly South Adams Fire and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, and Tri-County have all indicated that BASF is in compliance with all of their regulations. Other regulating agencies that have oversight of this property include, again, CD-PHE, the Solid Waste Management Division, and EPA and OSHA. With regard to personnel and community safety on the site, BASF personnel are required to be trained annually on their facility's emergency procedures. Included with their application and should have been provided to you was the Brighton BASF Integrated Contingency Plan, a detailed document that provides the framework for all emergency responses on their site, and it does include collaboration with South Adams Fire. The site is restricted. The site contains a perimeter fencing to prevent unqualified individuals from entering their site and tampering with their equipment. And the Planning Commission analysis for this property, the Planning Commission did recognize that the operation was in existence prior to being annexed into the city, and the request itself would allow the applicant to expand their operations in compliance with the Land Development Code. Their existing operations, they've established that they do maintain compliance with all regulatory agencies, and the proposed parking lot itself would be developed in compliance with our requirements in the Land Development Code. This is just a snapshot of the approval criteria that staff and Planning Commission used when evaluating the request. I'm not going to read each one of those, but these are straight from the Land Development Code. And last month, on December fourth, the Planning Commission did vote five to zero to forward this CUP request to City Council with a recommendation of approval, subject to three conditions. This is a quick snapshot of those three conditions with fairly standard language that you typically will see on most conditional use permit requests. And as of today, I've not received any contact from the public or any request for any additional information on this CUP. I'm happy to answer any questions that the mayor and council may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff concerning this parking lot? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I understand about the expansion with the parking lot, the expansion with the building as far as additional tanks and all. What do they plan on doing something like that within the next five years?
They did not provide us a timeline for that. That was really them being, working with us as staff to get their conditional use permit plan essentially completed. So if they had any inkling that they would be doing any of these expansions in the near future, with no specified timeframe, that they include that on the plan itself. So it's my impression that these would be done at some point in the near future.
Okay. I just have some concerns about the expansion with that area still growing in the northern area, and you have right across the street there, Bell Creek, and just seeing how close those homes are there. I know this before, this was in a county that got annexed into the city in two thousand and seven. So now, you know, it's part of our, you know, within our growth boundary. Still, my concerns are adding certain things outside that would maybe mitigate, not mitigate, but maybe cause an effect as far as the wind or so, if there's products outside that could migrate over into the neighborhood of Bell Creek. And the products there, as far as this adhesive, that's flammable product, correct?
I would imagine that there is some flammability to it, but it's not a volatile flammability, and I may have to let the applicant expand on that a little bit more.
All right. I hear from the applicant. Thank you.
Councilwoman Frank?
On the parking lot expansion, is that a growth of employees, or just needed parking now?
I think it's a logistical issue. Right now, the parking lot, if I can display this on my screen, it's all on the north side of the building, and so they run into quite a bit of ice issues in the wintertime and things of that nature. They're wanting to basically get that away from the building itself for safety reasons for their employees.
Thank you.
All right. Saying no more questions for our staff, I'd invite the applicant forward. State your name and address for the record and add anything to the presentation that you may want to add.
Uh, Bill Hack, uh, 10601 Fulton Street, Brighton, Colorado. We're still at the Brighton Post Office there. Um, I guess to answer, uh, Mr. Douglas's question, um, the additional tankage that would be added, one is a nitrogen storage tank, which is used to inert our vessels to improve the safety related to flammability. So, that's the driver for that particular, um, tank, which was in the, what would it be? Southeast corner of the site. Um, the tank farm in the back of the site, if that gets expanded, is existing predominantly polymer and other fairly inert materials. Um, there is no plan to expand tankage of any of our hazardous materials at this time. The water retention in the south, or excuse me, northwest corner of the site is needed to manage the water as a result of adding the parking lot. And, um, as he stated, the parking lot itself is predominantly driven by safety. Um, it's a significant expense on our part, almost a half a million dollars. But we felt it was necessary to guarantee the safety of our employees. We've had quite a few trip and fall incidents at the site since I've been there in the last two years. And then previous to that, when I arrived at the site, we had also had a number of employees fall. So, before someone gets seriously injured, I convinced my senior management that we needed to take action to address this. So. And with that, I'll just see if there's any other questions you gentlemen or ladies have.
Thank you. Mr. Wardiola.
Yeah. Um, do you know a timeline of the expansion that Mr. Douglas asked staff? And when you guys are going to do the other parts of the expansion?
The nitrogen tank will literally be purchased as soon as this is approved because it's a safety project that we've been waiting for CUP approval, both that and the, um, parking lot. The parking lot, we would break ground as soon as winter's over, basically. So, that's those two, as well as the additional water control in the back of the site. The tank farm expansion is in the early stages of development. It would have to be approved. Um, and if it is, we're in the two-year timeframe, but those tanks. Um, unlike the Phillips 6D6, um, these are very small tanks, typically 15-foot diameter and 10 to 15 feet tall. So, we're not talking huge tanks. Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis.
Uh, thank you for coming in. Um, how long has this facility been there? Do you know that?
Whew. Um, I believe the facility was originally used for metals in the 1980s it was constructed. Um, it was purchased in the early 90s by another company to do adhesives manufacturing. We actually make joint compounds and deck coatings for the construction industry for waterproofing purposes. Um, and then BASF purchased the facility in 1997. We've been there about, about, yeah.
Since BASF has been there, have there been any significant safety issues involving any chemical spills or fires, to your knowledge?
Um, there was an incident, and I do not know what year it was in, related to TDI, which is a isocyanate that's used in the production. I know that, um, there was an OSHA investigation. I do not know all the details of that investigation. Um, but I can tell you, since I've arrived at the site, we have addressed having our own first responders so that we can respond immediately, including, uh, Scott Air Packs, et cetera, with HazWAP or training. And we work very closely with Adams County Fire and Hazmat to make sure we never would have a recurrence.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you. I had a question about, um, if there was an incident as far as leakage or so, what is the evacuation radius as far as if the folks within the facility had to vacate the property? How about outside? Would, would this affect Bell Creek area?
Well, the, um, under OSHA's, um, risk management planning, we do fall under that. And we have submitted the appropriate paperwork. Our worst-case scenario would barely touch the edge of that neighborhood. Um, but our worst-case practical, um, is much reduced, only slightly outside of our fence line to the west, which I believe is what you're concerned about.
Right. Okay.
And we also, um, we've started having, um, meetings with our neighbors, with the folks in our immediate community. And we do have a, um, cap, um, that gets together about annually to talk about how we can contact them in an emergency, et cetera. So, we have actively, um, been engaged in making sure that we keep our community safe.
So, you have, you've had discussions with the Bell Creek neighborhood?
Uh, we have reached out to the community. Um, whoever chooses to come is welcome to come. Predominantly, we've seen folks from the industrial, um, neighborhood there, or whatever you want to call that. Um, and also some of the businesses to the west side of 85. Also, a few of those folks have come over and spoken with us.
And how, how recent was your last meeting?
I want to say they're typically in August or September.
Okay.
And, um, the first one, we had a number of individuals from the city actually attend. I believe Roger was there, if I remember correctly. And then the second one, um, this last year, um, Adams County Fire was there, as well as a number of folks from the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wardiola.
You have 145 employees. Do you know the percentage of employees that live in our city?
Whew. I, I do not know that, sir. I'm sorry. Um, they come from all over the community.
Okay. And I live in Bell Creek, so if you're, if you're not getting response from our HOA, you could always send me an email and I could give it to them. Because I think that's a big concern for us in our Bell Creek. Um, HOA Board would love to go to those meetings. We're right across the highway from you guys.
You're on the other side of 85, I think?
Yep. I live in Bell Creek, so.
Okay. I will definitely reach up.
They could give you information about my email, and I would just pass it along to them, definitely.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the counsel on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. All righty. Ready for a motion on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission. Mr. Teter.
Make a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission on case CU-116-19.
Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the findings and recommendations of Planning Commission on the case stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'm open for a motion on the conditional use permit. Councilwoman Frank.
I motion to approve the conditional use permit.
Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve CU-116-19. Well, the, uh, City Attorney doesn't even need to read this title. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you, folks, for coming in tonight. Brings us to resolutions. We have one this evening. Resolution 2019-01 is adopting the C3 Housing Plan. Invite the staff forward to make the presentation.
Just need to pull up the PowerPoint. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are here tonight to consider the adoption of the three, C3 Strategic Housing Plan, uh, which is the culmination of a year-long effort to help provide guidance not only to the city, but also to the city's housing authority regarding, uh, potential housing needs and strategies moving forward. So, tonight, um, we are going to discuss the three main components of this plan. The housing needs assessment, the balanced housing plan, the affordable housing implementation plan. Have any discussion, questions to answer, and then consider the plan for, um, adoption. So, just as a little bit of background on the project itself, um, there was, uh, public input throughout. Uh, there was stakeholder focus group work, uh, early on. Uh, there was an open house, uh, you might remember here in the atrium, uh, for the general public and other stakeholders. One-on-one interviews with other stakeholders, city staff. Lots of groups were represented, including developers, nonprofits, um, homeless advocates, financial community, real estate community. Uh, there were multiple city council check-ins on this project. Uh, most recently, on the initial strategies and recommendations, uh, which is why much of what you'll see tonight should sound, uh, familiar to you. So, as we jump into the, to the actual plan itself, um, there's three main components, um, as I mentioned earlier. The first one is the housing needs assessment. Um, this is, this is really a data-driven look into the, the whole range or myriad of factors that influence the supply and demand of housing in Commerce City. Um, and this, this analysis includes both a quantitative analysis through a variety of sources, such as the Census, uh, Department of Local Affairs, um, the state, uh, demographer's office, uh, Dr. Cog, et cetera. But it's also a qualitative analysis obtained really through that input that I mentioned earlier from stakeholders, real estate professionals, um, the, the, uh, the, not a lot of the nonprofits and the development community. The second part of the plan, that, that first part is about 91 pages, uh, and it really helps set the table. It sets the scene for what are the biggest needs out there. The second part is the Balanced Housing Plan. The Balanced Housing Plan is really the primary efforts that the city can undertake. Uh, what, what's under the city's control, uh, to help address some of these needs. Um, and so, that's, it's really, it's pretty comprehensive in focus. It doesn't look at just strictly affordable housing. It looks at a whole range of housing types and, and housing price points in its strategies. It also looks at a different variety of forms, housing forms, and you'll hear about those in, in just a little bit. The third part, um, is the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. Um, that, that's the, the portion of the plan that the housing authority can really, uh, gives them a roadmap of what they can look forward to, to try and consider, evaluate, and tackle as they, uh, try and increase the amount of affordable housing stock available, uh, to Commerce City residents. Because there's the, the, uh, housing needs assessment and the Balanced Housing Plan, I'll be doing that presentation. Uh, and then I'll turn it over, when we get to the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, to Tracy Jones, who can talk about, uh, a lot of the strategies and recommendations that are included in that. Um, as you look through this plan, um, the housing needs assessment is the first part, obviously. And we had a study session on just the housing needs assessment, uh, middle of last year. Um, there's five findings, there's a lot of findings. There's 91 pages worth of findings. Lot of great data in there. But there's five key ones that sort of stand out above the rest, um, that, that we reviewed with you prior. One is that there's a, there's some demographic outliers that Commerce City has in relation to a lot of its other front-range neighbors. Uh, huge population growth. This is not news to you folks, uh, but obviously for setting the table for understanding our housing needs, it's an important factor. Uh, from 2000 to 2017, we saw 155% increase in population. Uh, so compared to a lot of our other jurisdictions along the front range, that's a huge increase. We've seen a rise in the senior population, um, and that has real needs on a certain type of housing, obviously, within the city. But it's interesting because you'd expect that type of growth, uh, in a senior population or any subset of the population with such a large overall population increase. There's a high percentage of single-family detached dwellings in Commerce City compared to a lot of our neighbors. Uh, about 76% of our overall housing stock comprised of, uh, single-family detached. Uh, there's a high Hispanic population. Again, not a lot of this, uh, might be brand-new information for you, but it, it certainly helps set the table. About 47% of our overall population, uh, is, uh, part of the Hispanic population. And then finally, we have one of the younger populations, uh, not only on the front range, but in the state. The average age within the state of Colorado is 37.2 years. Uh, in Commerce City, we are at 31.7. One might ask, how can this be when I just made a point of talking about a rise in the senior population? And it is true that the overall percentage of our senior population is increasing, but compared to the percentage of the statewide senior population, it's still less in Commerce City. And we still have an overall younger population than the rest of the city. So, both of those factors are simultaneously, um, areas of emphasis that the city and the housing authority needs to account for. A second finding, again, not necessarily, um, um, news for, uh, City Council, but certainly helps set, sets the scene, the tale of two cities. Um, there's a, there's a disparity between the, the northern range and the historic city as it relates to the amount of population and construction growth, the education rates, uh, homeownership rates, average household income. There is a disparity on those types of metrics from the north to the south. Um, there's an affordability gap, the, the analysis found, and we probably spent the most time talking about that when we reviewed this prior. Um, you know, a cost-burdened household is one that spends more, more than 30% of their household income on housing. Um, and in Commerce City, one-third of all homes are cost-burdened, meaning they spend more than 30%. It's even worse for renters who are at 44%. Almost half of our renters are spending more than that 30% metric that you'd like to shoot for. Uh, finding four, the need for housing stock diversification. I've already hit on that through the high percentage of single-family detached that exists in the city. And finally, the growing homeless population. Uh, numbers for that are a little difficult, uh, but, you know, all indications and interviews through sources such as the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, all point to growth in the metro area, Adams County, and specifically Commerce City. So, as we move from, as we move from the, um, the actual housing needs assessment into the balanced housing plan, um, you know, this, again, is focusing on what the city can do to address key findings from the housing needs assessment. And the plan is organized, both sets of these next two plans are organized the same way. Um, there's overall strategies with multiple recommendations under each strategy. A fairly typical, uh, uh, plan approach. So, the first strategy under the Balanced Housing Plan for the city to consider are, uh, policy and regulatory strategies for creative housing solutions. Um, these are obviously under the city's control as we regulate, uh, various zoning ordinances, building codes, and other regulations that help either, um, enforce or sometimes ease the ability for some of these housing types to, uh, be able to develop. Um, and examples include development around transit-oriented development. Considering the, uh, allowing accessory dwelling units, ADUs, this has been in the news a lot lately. Some people call them mother-in-law units. Currently in Commerce City, those are not allowed anywhere except in the Bell Creek subdivision. Considering, the plan also recommends considering small home communities. Again, you might have heard them referred to as tiny homes. Um, these are, it's a very high-profile approach towards finding some housing solutions. Um, it's very early in this process, and there are some case examples in the study. Um, but as with all of these recommendations, the plan is recommending that the city consider these. This is not, obviously, adopting these, but it's recommending that there's value and that the city should explore them further. The second recommendation under the, this first strategy is undertaking initiatives to improve existing non-traditional housing options. Um, and the two they mentioned in Commerce City specifically were the mobile home parks and the, the former motel facilities. Uh, I think it's interesting, the, the, you know, it's called the Morning Side, well, it's previously called the Morning Side Heights Mobile Home Park. Um, the Piney Mountain Mobile Home Park there on 69th and Highway 2. There's a new owner there, and we have worked with him. Uh, he has, he's willing to make a substantial investment into that mobile home park. And, uh, our staff, particularly our building safety staff, has worked very hard with him to try and come up with a plan that's going to make a series of improvements. Landscaping, fencing, drainage, paving, uh, that is really going to help the appearance of it, but more importantly, make it a better community for the residents living there. And this plan really recommends trying to do that in more mobile home parks throughout the city due to the state of some of those as they exist. If you do notice that park, right now, it's, it's in a bit of a rough spot as that owner works with some of the existing spaces to try and get them ready for that redevelopment. Uh, but I think you're going to see in the first quarter and second quarter of 2019, you're going to start to see some real improvements on that mobile home park. The second strategy is, uh, really centered around funding more, uh, housing development opportunities. And there's, uh, three contemplated in the three recommendations under this particular strategy. The first one is for the city to consider fee and tax incentives and other, other funding approaches to help balance, uh, a lot of the housing, uh, needs in the city. Sometimes that might be in the form of waiving or reducing city, uh, fees or tax abatements. Uh, there's times that the plan talks about looking at some other cities, and now they use, uh, either density incentives or requirements that new builders, uh, include a certain percentage of affordable units within, uh, projects that are of a certain size. That particular specific recommendation, um, you know, would, would need some serious, uh, conversations with our development community. with our development community. You know, Denver's the, the, sort of the largest user of that approach, and I think some of our development community might say that that's a different context, but the plan certainly contemplates those types of incentives. The second one is to consider the use of CIPP funding to help fund projects through the Housing Authority. And, and a third one is to try and leverage the CDBG funding through the 108 loan guarantee program. That's a CDG program where you can use future CDBG revenues to basically use it for a loan, a loan process to get a larger dollar amount upfront. And the plan contemplates perhaps using that as an affordable housing revolving loan fund. The third strategy is one of the most interesting and certainly one of the most topical in 2019. It's a recommendation to promote the Opportunity Zone to maximize investment in that area for housing development. The area on the map that you see that's outlined in red is the Opportunity Zone that was approved by the state that's in Commerce City. It, it's interesting, this program is brand-new, less than a year old, and it, everyone, including the development community, is figuring out how to leverage those potential tax proceeds from that to, to try and get development. But the, the plan certainly recommends that it's an exciting opportunity, and given that it's so new, there might be some opportunities to, to sort of beat the competition to utilizing some of those dollars. So at that point, that's the, the overall focus. There's a lot of specifics within the Balanced Housing Plan, but that's, those are the primary recommendations and strategies considered within that. At this point, I am going to turn it over to Tracy to review the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. And I will forward the slides for you, just let me know.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Hi, Tracy.
I want to start off tonight by, first of all, thanking City Council for, the Housing Authority Board came to City Council in August of 2015, and one of the questions that City Council asked is what can we do to assist the Housing Authority? And this was one of the things that came out of that, this Housing Needs Assessment, to help to guide the Housing Authority, to give us some type of roadmap on how, you know, what the existing housing is in the city so we know what the need is for the Housing Authority and also for the city. So, thank you very much. We do have some Housing Authority members here with us tonight, and I know they're all very excited about this plan.
I don't know, does, I don't know if all the council knows who your board is. You guys want to just at least wave so we see them all back there? Thanks for being here. It's always important to have the board here supporting this lady, so we appreciate that. Go ahead, Tracy.
So, in the Affordable Housing Plan piece of it, this is going to be the portion that the Housing Authority is going to be looking at adoption, adopting during, during their February meeting. And so there are four strategies that are including, included in this part of the plan that they will be looking at, that hopefully will help guide the Housing Authority to more affordable housing in the city as it's needed. The first recommendation is to acquire or redevelop small rental development projects and under utilized properties in the city. They do list some target areas for that. The Derby neighborhood would be a prime location, some secondary target areas are, neighborhoods are Kemp, Rose Hill, immediately south of Derby, as well as Adams City to the west. And finally, again, the Opportunity Zone like Chris previously spoke about. The second strategy is to develop special-needs housing. And special-needs housing includes various populations, homeless, elderly, and veterans. Veteran housing is one of the needs that City Council recommended during one of the study sessions that the, when Civitas, the, the people who helped put the plan together came out and asked what would City Council, what does City Council see as a need, and veterans' housing was one of the needs brought forth by City Council. Our third strategy is increase the capacity of the Housing Authority. One of the recommendations is to explore programmatic funding opportunities, including down payment assistance programs, mortgage finance programs, and new private partnerships, things that could bring revenue streams into the Housing Authority that would allow us to increase the capacity of the Housing Authority to be able to do more things. The third, the fourth strategy is to develop and expand partnership with other agencies involved in housing-related services. So, one of those things would include joining the Home Consortium, which is something that we would need to investigate more to, to make sure that the Housing Authority would qualify to join that consortium that is led by Adams County. But those funds could be used to develop affordable housing. Another part is joining the Denver Metro Homeless Initiative. Although we attend a lot of meetings that have to do with the different various homeless boards, actually joining the Denver Metro Homeless Initiative would be something really good for the Housing Authority to look into doing. At this point, staff recommends that City Council adopt the Strategic C-3 Housing Plan, which includes the Housing Needs Assessment, the Balanced Housing Plan, and the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. And if there are any questions that City Council has for myself or for Chris, we'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Looks like Mr. Wadiola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you guys to doing this. This is something that is needed in Commerce City, and being here since 1983, you know, sometimes we don't think we're thinking about the future of housing. And the whole plan, I read it front and back, and I've been reading, it's just a good thing for Commerce City, for our residents. So I just want to say thank you. I do have one question on strategy number four for Affordable Housing Plan. Joining those two organizations, what is the cost? And when you guys look at that, if the cost is higher than the benefit, I mean, you know, getting different ideas from other organizations is always good, but what is the cost of joining something like that?
There is no cost to joining either.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
The, the biggest cost frankly is, is staff time. And, you know, right now, we have two, two Housing Authority staff members, so it's still a great observation because we still have to balance the benefits you get from devoting the time that we have to spend going to it.
But, but thank you again.
Tracy, I wanted to see if you would expand on the properties that you're already involved with so that, I have a lot of new council members, so that they know where our partnerships are now in the apartments over here. I forget the name of the development.
North Range Crossing.
North Range Crossing. Then you also have some interest still in...
Pine Crest.
Pine Crest, and what's the?
Contra Estates.
Contra Estates, that's what I was thinking of.
Yes, that's correct.
So, I, I didn't know if the council knew that there, we already had some partnerships with some affordable housing in the area through our Housing Authority. And I think expanding on those opportunities is beneficial to the city.
Yes.
And I wanted to, you know what, I had the board raise their hands. Priscilla does so much for the Housing Authority.
Yes, she does.
She's right up front, I don't want to leave her out, so thanks, Priscilla. All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Come on up. This is the opportunity to back your staff up. Renee, get in line.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Bruce Thomas, I'm the chairman of the Commerce City Housing Authority, been doing it about 13 years. And I am truly excited for this opportunity. This is the first time, we've had some years of working on this stuff, that I see the city getting involved and wanting something to do. This is really exciting because this is what builds up cities. Everywhere needs somewhere to live, all your workers need somewhere to live, and it's got to be addressed. Seniors, veterans, that all can work out so well, and I'm excited to working with you and look future projects. I'm excited. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Bruce, all I would have to add is, you know, everybody does need a place to live, and with the cost of housing these days, it's hard for teachers and folks like that to...
That's what our project on the Heart of Health is dealing with. You've got to have $32,000 a year to get there. So the word affordable housing now is taking on a much broader sort of spectrum of what everybody thinks it is.
Right. Yeah, it's not what it used to be.
Right.
And, and now we see teachers having to work part-time at Starbucks just to try to have a place to live. So there is a gap, and I see some of the stuff my colleague in Denver is doing, making some housing options for folks in that pay range. So appreciate what your intent is and the support you give to the city.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions?
I don't see any.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Is there anyone else? Seeing none. All righty, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Wadiola.
I'd like to have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-01, as is.
Thank you, Mr. Madera.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-01, adopting the C-3 Housing Plan. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2019-01, resolution adopting the Strategic C-3 Housing Plan, consisting of the City of Commerce City 2018 Housing Needs Assessment, the Commerce City Balanced Housing Plan, and the Commerce City Housing Authority Affordable Housing Implementation Plan.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you all for coming in this evening. Way to start off a new year, isn't it? All right. Now I got to back up and go back to the beginning of the meeting and take care of a couple of things. First and foremost, I do have someone here that wants to speak for Citizen Communication. Kendall, with the Boys and Girls Club, will you please come forward? Sorry, you had to wait around, but we want to make sure you get your chance.
Well, I apologize. That is my fault, I am out of turn, so I apologize. Clearly, this is my first time here before you all, but thank you for graciously allowing me to come out of turn and speak with you. I wanted to take a very quick, quick moment because your council has been so generous and to the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Denver and our club here in Commerce City. I have a report for you all to tell you what your funds have gone to, and this generous support is so needed for the Boys and Girls Club here. So I wanted to give, I have some of these reports that we could pass out to you if anyone is interested.
Just hand them to the attorney right here, to the, there you go. He'll bring them up.
To give you a brief update, as you all know, you guys have generously supported the clubs for many years now, and particularly this club, at a very significant amount. So we've had an $80,000 donation, and that goes towards our overall operating budget of keeping that club open here, serving the children in Commerce City. We have an operational budget of nearly $350,000, so that is a substantial amount that you guys have all approved to help offset that. We only charge all of our members an annual fee of $2. So that is only, the clubs can only exist because of general support from the community, and the City of Commerce City has been so great in making sure that this club can, can exist here for the members. We have about 640 members here in Commerce City, and of the 16 clubs in Metro Denver, this is our club that has the highest population of free and reduced lunch. So 91% of the kids that come to this club are on some sort of assistance in low-income areas. And because the club is only $2 a year for them to be a member, it is a huge relief to their families. I know that the average cost for childcare, it goes up every year as do these housing costs that everyone is talking about. It is a very expensive city to live in, and it's a huge burden on families to try and find after-school care for their kids and all through the summertime. So whenever the school bell rings and they're out of, out of school during the summer, our clubs are open to serve the needs of the kids here in Commerce City. So I just wanted to thank you so much for your investment and your belief in the kids here and giving them all the access to opportunities that they otherwise wouldn't have. We know that, we have gone up this last year, we're really proud we've been focusing on our frequent attenders. Those are kids that attend the club two or more times a week, and we saw an increase in that in this particular club in Commerce City by 16% this last year. And we've done some outside research that have shown that kids that attend the club at that frequent attendee rate do much higher than their peers in a lot of the non-cognitive abilities, so that's attitude toward schools, that is life attitudes, that is leadership and resiliency. And so those are the key competencies that make up character, and that's one of the areas we really focus on. We focus on academic achievement, and healthy lifestyles, and this character and leadership. So in the back of your packet is a profile of one of our Commerce City kiddos, who is a 16-year-old. He has attended many different leadership activities. We've taken him on tours of five different colleges. He wants to be either a brain surgeon when he grows up or something in the medical field, but because of the investment you guys have given, we have 640 other members who have these dreams and who want access to these opportunities, and it only is possible because of the generous contributions and the council really deciding that they want to invest in their community and in their kids. So I just wanted to take a brief moment. I know I'm out of turn, but I wanted to thank you so much for all that you have done for the Boys and Girls Club and for the children here in Commerce City.
Well, let me start by saying thank you for what the Boys and Girls Club does for our community.
Thank you.
We're glad to have it. It's a great place for some of our young folks to be able to go and have some leadership, so we appreciate it. I do have, Mr. Douglas has something to say.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming and updating us on the Boys and Girls Club achievements. And I do appreciate Boys and Girls Club, my, our middle daughter works for Boys and Girls Club, and she got her opportunity there and, and has taken full advantage of that. And so, so she really appreciates serving those kids and giving back, because you're, you're right. It's a everyday growing, it's everyday need as far as the kids who come to the facility. I think the facility is not big enough for all the, you know, needs, you know? I mean, it's, you couldn't big, you know, it's one of those things, you couldn't build it big enough because you would just have more, you know, every day you open the doors, a few more kids coming in. But just what it offers, you know, especially the activities outside, all different organizations, different athletic sponsorship has also helped those kids. And so it's a, it's a great opportunity, so appreciate you coming down, let us know how our, how our dollars contributing to the Boys and Clubs have worked, so thank you.
Absolutely. And, and this particular club, I think you were updated last year about the new outdoor turf field that we put in. It also, we were able to get the Denver Broncos to underwrite lighting of the field, but not only does that help the kids at the Suncor Commerce City Club, but in addition to it, we've been able to bring in kids from our other 16 locations to the Commerce City location to play on that field and have their family come out and feel like they're under the big city lights in the athletics. The athletics is really where the club started, and now that we bring the kids in, we do the academics, and we do a lot of other opportunities, music, STEM, technology, trying to open up opportunities for, for these kids that may not have that kind of access, to try and even the playing field, especially for our low-income youth, and making sure that we are serving those needs. But I'm glad you brought up the athletics because it is one of the core areas, and this particular club has seen such a growth in that in the last two years.
Thank you.
All right, we have Mr. Teeter.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation, I enjoyed it. I noticed this week you had a very, very large meeting over there, there was cars parked all over the street, so you've had people coming in, looking at it. On the same subject, we have five brand-new council people up here that have probably not been in your building, so if you would arrange, maybe these people would like to, these councilmen would like to come and take a tour of that place.
I would love to do that. I would have, if there's several people who would be interested in coming to tour the facility and meet some of the staff and some of the youth that attend there, I would be more than happy to schedule that.
That'd be great.
That would be wonderful.
We'd be happy to work on your behalf to coordinate that.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiola.
I just wanted to let council know also is, you know, a lot of my... I just wanted to let council know also is, you know, a lot of my former students, uh, received the Keystone, they're in Keystone Club, and they receive a scholarship even afterwards, um, because a lot of times people just think it's K through twelve and then it's done. But a lot of the students, they have a partnership with Colorado State University that a lot of students get a ten thousand dollar scholarship for four years. So, um, it, it goes on more than just twelfth grade in Commerce City. It's given back to our, our kids even for post-secondary. The only recommendation, and I told Kathy this, is I would like to see more Commerce City residents as staff. I think that's a huge impact on our Commerce City population. Um, and Ms. Luna, we talked about that and I did tour it, but that's a suggestion I always give to, uh, Boys and Girls Club, even, um, our school districts is, that's a huge benefit when our kids see someone that grew up in the same area as you. But kudos to the Boys Club. Like it says, it keeps going even after twelfth grade. Good job.
I only have one more thing I'd like to add. Um, I am the president of the Commerce City Rotary Club. The Rotary Club does a lot of good things and helps a lot of organizations. Um, I would love to give you an invitation to come and join us at a Rotary Club meeting to see what we do.
Wonderful.
And, uh, we also have a program every week. And I know that I have some Rotarians that would love to have the Boys and Girls Club come and speak for forty-five minutes on what they do in our community, um, to help you guys reach some of the, uh, business folks in our community to let them know about the Boys and Girls Club. I think it'd be beneficial to the Rotary Club and to the Boys and Girls Club. So if you ever would like to come.
Yeah.
Um, twelve o'clock on Wednesdays, every Wednesday, except for next Wednesday at L. Harding. So this Wednesday we will be there, but the following Wednesday we won't.
Well, I would love to do that.
So, uh, we'd love to, love to at least get you to come and meet some folks and then, uh, be great to get a presentation from the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, we would love that opportunity. That would be fantastic.
Awesome.
Should I?
Yeah, you know what? Through Brian or Roger or Troy, one of them, Troy, Troy will help make that contact.
Perfect.
So you can, uh, reach out to me. And, uh, Mr. Bullock in the back is waving his hand. He can also help you with a contact to, uh, the Rotary Club. And Mr. Mingleton is also a Rotarian. So you're surrounded.
Well, this is wonderful. Thank you for all the support.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thanks for being patient and, and, uh, coming in.
Thanks for letting me come out of turn. I apologize for that.
Not a problem.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Alright, one more thing that I need to touch on from the beginning of the meeting. Um, I think it's really important, uh, that we recognize our partners. And tonight we have, uh, some partners that are here. Uh, Dale Mingleton from the foundation is here. Um, always glad to have Dale, uh, show up and, and support us here at the council. And then John from District Fourteen, um, glad to have you, uh, in our meeting, um, kinda see how we do things. But I think, um, the thing that makes Commerce City, uh, thrive and be who we are is the collaboration and, uh, making sure that we recognize those partners. So thank you guys for, for being here today. Alright, we're gonna move on to administrative business. Alright, Troy, uh, you have something, um, to discuss on the E-470 letter on hazardous materials?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Included in tonight's packet was a letter, um, and a request authorizing, I believe, you to sign, the letter from E-470, uh, in reference to creating a transportation corridor for hazardous materials along the E-470 corridor. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that that you might have. Um, the letter does state, uh, support from the city council for further exploring that corridor being developed as a hazardous materials corridor. It would allow the authority to continue to seek that same, uh, permission from other communities along the corridor. And eventually then they would be applying to, through C.D.O. and the Colorado State Patrol to meet their criteria for the purposes of making E-470 a corridor. It does not eliminate corridors that exist in our community or any other. It simply adds the E-470 corridor as an additional corridor, uh, for the transport of hazardous materials.
Thank you. Hopefully all the council members have had a chance to read the letter. Uh, Mr. Wardiola, you have any comments?
Yeah. Um, did we not kinda already give our approval on this at a study session?
Yeah, but we can't take formal action in a study session.
A formal action until we vote on it today.
Yeah, so we have to have formal action in a council meeting?
Perfect.
The council also asked some additional questions which were included both in the letter and in the packet. So there is a little bit more detail than we had for you at the study session.
Alright, now before I ask for a motion, um, to have council give approval of the letter to be signed by me, I think it's important for our residents to understand why we would consider supporting a hazardous materials, uh, route be, to be on E-470. Um, we've contemplated the fact that there is potential for additional oil and gas well development in our area. Um, as our city continues to grow with the amount of industrial uses that we have in our community, it's important that we try to reduce the amount of hazardous materials that is, uh, bisecting or driving through neighborhoods and on our local streets. And if we can have E-470, uh, bypass some of that hazardous material traffic that would otherwise come through our city on Highway D-5 or Highway Two or Two Seventy. Um, and we can route that out and around an area where, uh, it would have less of an impact and, uh, less opportunity for accidents because of how E-470 is structured. I believe it will be beneficial to our community to have an additional route and, and try to, uh, move some of that hazardous material traffic away from things. And that is everything from fuel to chlorines and other goods that have to, uh, be hauled on these roads on a daily basis. The one thing that the letter does spell out is that we would ask E-470 to expand the range of this hazardous materials, uh, route to extend beyond I-70 to Thornton or wherever it is. It's, it's not very big at this time, but to allow that to be expanded because that then would give more opportunity to have some of those materials, um, again, separated from our community. So that's why we are, uh, I believe we are in support. We're gonna find out here in a minute. But, uh, for the residents at home and those in the audience, that's why, uh, E-470 actually reached out to us to ask us if we would be supportive of, uh, allowing that to become a route that would allow for hazardous materials, um, to be hauled on it. With that said, I'm open for a motion to approve the letter to be signed by me to be delivered to E-470. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve for, uh, the letter to, for E-470.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and second to allow me to sign a letter to, to support hazardous materials, uh, opportunity for, for, uh, traffic along E-470. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Uh, that letter will be signed and sent off to E-470. And now tonight is our, um, oil and gas, uh, night for the month. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. McBroom to make the monthly oil and gas update presentation. And he's gonna turn it over to Chris.
I'm happy to delegate to Mr. Kramer. After Mr. Kramer's presentation, I do have a couple of other items of administrative council business for council's consideration.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Normally we do this on the third Monday of the month, but since we, uh, are not going to have, uh, a regular meeting on the third Monday, we will be doing this, uh, monthly meeting tonight. Um, so again, um, just to kick it off with city applications to date, uh, we have received no applications for oil and gas permits or regional operating agreement within the City of Commerce City. Um, there are, as before, there are some Form Twos, which is a COGCC or a state process, uh, that have been applied for. Uh, but, uh, two of the three operators for all, uh, of those proposed well pad sites have agreed to continue the comment period, to have a second comment period, um, for, for both those two and Two As. The spacing application, um, council might remember that, uh, the spacing application is really a mineral rights issue that is permitted by the state for downhole operations. Uh, we still monitor this, even though this is not something that staff, uh, actively, um, participates in with the COGCC, instead spending our energies on the Form Two and Two As. However, we still monitor it. There has been, as expected, uh, approvals of most of those spacing applications. Uh, the two that are really outstanding are the two that are, uh, there's the overlap. Um, and I will show you on a map in just a moment what those are. No new Form Twos, which are for each individual well, and no new Two As, which are the actual surface well pad location. As I mentioned, there is, uh, um, an opportunity for a second comment period that we have worked out with operators, uh, that we'll have an opportunity to do, uh, once those, uh, second comment periods go live again. Um, you'll see the map here, um, and, uh, the two, I'm gonna, I assume you guys can see my cursor on your screens. The, these are the two spacing applications that are not approved yet. Um, traditionally, the COGCC, when there are those kinds of overlaps, uh, will basically direct both operators to work it out, as, uh, we understand it. So that's why ni- neither of those spacing applications have been approved today. Uh, just some overall general updates. Uh, first of all, uh, what's not on here is that, uh, there is the, uh, item next week regarding the task force as a result of the communication at the last meeting. Um, there's also the, uh, community meeting on, uh, December sixth, uh, to discuss, uh, there are really two parts. Uh, part of the meeting was an opportunity for residents to hear directly from Extraction Oil and Gas, who the city's been, city staff has been having discussions with. Um, that was really as a direct request from city council to give residents an opportunity to have that face-to-face time, to ask the questions that they really wanted to ask. Um, and the second part of that was the city, uh, staff providing updates on, um, a lot of the added protections and, uh, what's called best management practices or BMPs that the city is, uh, the city staff has been trying to work out with Extraction. So it was an opportunity to get public input, uh, on those particular BMPs or best management practices. The materials that the city produced at that, uh, open house are up on the oil and gas page on the city's website. Uh, should city council want to see those any further. Um, and we also continued the comment opportunity after the open house. It's still going on. So we're still collecting, uh, the overall data and input from that community meeting. Also, city staff has continued to make good progress, uh, regarding the opportunity for an oil and gas, uh, transportation impact fee. Um, and so we are expecting to have the opportunity for a community meeting in the next three months. Uh, but the initial data gathering phase has been complete. And so now the consultants are actively working to model that impact fee, which is what's required anytime you have any impact fee, whether it's drainage, um, park or transportation. They have to follow the same process and modeling that is how you go about setting a fair impact fee for that. And that's the stage we're in now. We're also continuing to meet with Adams County and their oil and gas staff on a variety of issues, including the opportunity for, uh, shared, uh, services, uh, whether that's inspections, uh, but also looking at the opportunities to talk about risk management and, uh, emergency response. And specifically as it relates to, uh, making sure that the various fire district protection, um, processes and our emergency management are all on the same page. We're really trying to utilize a, a model that Weld County, uh, uses for a regional approach towards, uh, resources and response. Um, and then finally, uh, city council did adopt, uh, a, a few, uh, amendments to the oil and gas LDC section. Uh, it was a fairly limited in scope. It was not an overhaul or anything along those lines. But it was simply to clarify and reorganize some regulations, uh, related to, uh, the oil and gas section, especially as it relates to con- potential conflicts with state law. So at this point, uh, staff is certainly available for any questions you may have at this time.
Mr. Douglas.
Oh, that was for council administration, but I'll go ahead and ask a question. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, question on the applications. Are they, right now currently, these are all on hold, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't-
I'm sorry, the applications, the current applications, there are, I'm sorry, Form A applications are on hold.
Yes.
And then the current spacing applications, um, have been approved by the state, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, uh, the one that was disapproved was, um, the Antelope? At the, at this time?
So the, the spacing application doesn't necessarily have that project name asso- associated with it. The spacing application is just for the mineral interests for a large, huge, um, section or a couple of mi- square miles at a time.
Okay.
The names that have those well pads that are like the Antelope or the bird names that you might, those are so attached to a well pad.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Seeing none. Thanks for the update, Chris.
See you next week.
Thank you. Um, I do wanna give an update, though. I got a message saying that I-270 is, uh, closed down eastbound. So if anybody's leaving, go on Two Seventy, go a different way. There's a semi-truck on fire that has the road shut down. Goes right to my point why we need E-470 in that letter, right? I don't know how that stuff works out that way, but, um, don't take Two Seventy tonight. Alright, now we're gonna get back into administrative council business. Uh, Mr. McBroom, you had a couple of items, you said?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The first is, um, at the last, uh, regular city council meeting on December seventeenth, city council had a discussion, uh, wanting some follow-up report from city staff about how we manage projects through the development process at the city, including how we, uh, share information and announcements about those projects. When council took action on December seventeenth, they set a special meeting for January fourteenth. Uh, although that's what the motion was, I don't think the intent was to set a special meeting for January fourteenth, but just to have this item on the January fourteenth study session, which it is. So I wanted some clarification on that. But related to that, also on the January fourteenth study session agenda is a city council discussion about a potential oil and gas task force. We do think, uh, along with a study session discussion that would be, um, that would be focused on providing additional direction to staff, there may be a need for an executive session that night to discuss the impacts a task force might have on current negotiations that are occurring, uh, with Extraction Oil and Gas. So we would actually suggest, there probably isn't a need for a special meeting for the economic development topic that city council was discussing, but we do think there's a, a need for a special meeting, uh, for an executive session regarding the, uh, oil and gas task force discussion that will occur at the study session, if that makes sense.
Makes sense. So first of all, I'll go ahead and, um, state that we, I'll, I'll call for a special meeting for that night for the purposes of an executive session if needed, um, concerning a citizen advisory group on oil and gas. Um, secondly, uh, my recollection is, no, that we weren't setting a special meeting, um, that we were moving it and sending it to a study session. Now, uh, I wanna reach out to my colleagues. Does anybody recall that being any different than what I just stated?
You're talking about updates, not development?
Yep. Do you recall it being me calling a special meeting for that to happen? I know it was requested by Mr. Huesman.
Yeah.
But then there was some discussion and I believe we dropped the need for a special meeting. And so there was no special meeting identified. And then the council said, well, let's have it at a study session right away.
Yeah.
Does anybody recall that being different than that?
No. No matter of fact-
Except Robert.
I was not in attendance that night, but I did watch, uh, with great interest the following morning on the internet and I saw the motion as being, uh, for a special meeting. So because it's on a study session, all that council would have to do would be to cancel, have a quick motion to cancel that special meeting, just because I think that's what the minutes reflect, was that there was a motion for that.
I'm open for a motion to, uh, cancel any special meeting that would have been set for those purposes. Councilman Frank.
I'll motion to cancel the special meeting.
Mr. Davis.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to council any special meeting for economic development purposes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And then I don't need a, uh, to do anything on a special meeting that's already set, right? I can do that.
Well, it would be better to have, council could call it, or you'd have to do a separate notice after this meeting.
Ah, well, then I'll just have the council- Ah, well, then I'll just have the council do it. I need a motion for a special meeting for the 14th for potential executive session for citizen group, if needed, concerning Oil and Gas. Councilwoman Frank?
I'll motion to have a special meeting on, during-
January 14th.
Or on January 14th, for the purpose of discussing the-
Executive session.
If we need an executive session for the purpose of the Oil and Gas Task Force-
Potential.
Potential.
All right, thank you, Mr. Madera.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Hopefully that takes care of all your needs.
I do have one additional item.
Of course you do.
We are scheduled to kick off later this spring, the city council's inaugural Civics Academy. We've not seen the number of applicants that we'd hoped, and so Troy has an update for you to seek some additional help and an offer of some additional help from staff.
Okay.
So at this point in time, with one week remaining before the advertised deadline, we have six people who have indicated an interest in participating in the Civics Academy. We had started this process out with the idea that we would have 18 people who participated. My recommendation to the council is, if we have 15 or more people that are registered next Monday, that we go ahead and host the class.
Okay.
If we have less than 15, my suggestion would be we postpone the class, and I would come back to you at a study session to discuss some ideas about how we might proceed going forward.
Great, thank you. And you know, I think if we get some additional information out there to folks, I know Dale heads up the Leadership Program, the school district may have some folks that are interested in participating, and so good public service announcement opportunity right now, being on Channel 8 and with the school district here in the, in the room, anybody that is interested in our program, we do have some slots available, would love to fill those slots for the Civic Academy.
The information can be found on our website at C3gov.com.
C3gov.com.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frank, you're taking that civics class this time around, aren't you? You see? I already got you another one, Troy. Mark it up to seven. All right, hopefully, well, oh, we got another one over here. Jose Wardiola, sign him up.
Could you guys send us the flyer again, so we could just start sending it to everyone? Or is there a flyer?
Yes, so there are several different pieces of marketing material, including a calendar. They are on the website, but we'd be happy to send those as an attachment again to the council.
Awesome.
Thank you.
And if I can get Dale to remind me on Wednesday, I'll bring it up at Rotary. But I do think it's a well worthwhile program, just like the Leadership Program, to get people more involved on the civic side of what we do. So, thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
All right, administrative council business, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, there's been some, people have been contacting me about people parking their vehicles throughout the neighborhood in Frontera. One in particular is someone who has, who's renting property and knows about our parking restrictions and has vehicles parked throughout the neighborhood. So I know there was, we had an update with what the police department's doing, ramping that program up, and I'm just gonna, after the meeting, I'll pass along the address and photos and all that, and let the police department take care of that. That's it. I was gonna speak on our, we had the discussion about having executive session for Oil and Gas, and I didn't get to have an opportunity to speak on that. So I'll save that for, for next week.
Yeah, and I think next week would be the appropriate time. And just to make it clear, I think what the council did was set the opportunity for a special meeting, and in case an executive session is necessary for legal advice pertaining to negotiations, outside of that, it doesn't mean that we're going to have an executive session, so I don't want to have anybody think we're doing something. It's just there in case we need legal advice pertaining to those type of interactions that are going on. That's something that has to be done then.
Okay.
All right.
And then if we can get an update on 112th construction as far as eastbound from Chambers to 100, I'm sorry, east, eastbound from Chambers to Tower, this would be Oakwood and local homes, as far as, there's some bad patches over there, maybe if they could mitigate those. It's not a huge area like it has been in the past year, but there's some areas that's pretty, they're pretty rough spots.
All right. And you know, Steve, I think now's a perfect time to do a shout-out on our C3gov Ask C3 program. I've been telling a lot of people about that, and to me, that's the best way to get results the quickest. Go to our website, look up the C3, Ask C3 program, and you can put it on your cellphone, take a picture of that pothole, and it goes directly to the Public Works Department, and they can get that patch right away. But it's also good for graffiti, trash, weeds, you name it, signs, streetlights. So anybody out there that doesn't have that app on their phone, it makes it great for reporting and resolved, you get, someone responds within a 24-hour period. So please try to utilize the Ask C3 app if you haven't. All right, Mr. Madera?
Yeah, just real quick, I know it's not our intersection, but on 85 and 70th, the red lights are out going westbound on 70th, you know, so when you're coming out of the Ace Hardware, you get those lights, both the red lights are out in that intersection, so, you know, if we can reach out to C Dot or whoever's in charge of that light and get that fixed.
That one's pretty important. You might have an officer make sure people aren't just blowing through that intersection. Thanks, Mr. Madera. All right, Mr. Davis?
I had a couple of people in the Outlook community ask me about speeding east of Chambers on 120th, but I know you're working it, 'cause I saw a car working it the other day, so I think you're already on top of that. I had a couple of residents that just told me they're flying through their usual speeds. And also, I'd like to give a shout-out, I believe his name was Officer Joseph, is that the email I sent you, Chief, at King Supers?
Neville.
Neville. You know Officer Neville, he's everywhere. I pulled up to King Supers the other day, and there were a lot of cars in the handicap spot there, it happens all the time. Steve, you work there, you probably know what I'm talking about, people pull up there and run inside. Not when Officer Neville's on duty. He patrols that lot extremely well, and as well as the rest of that part of reunion, I see him everywhere. But, you know, I approached him, and I thought I'd get the old, well, it's the law, sir, and he has this way, if you know him, about him, that he just introduces himself, and he says, I consider this an educational opportunity for people, because some people just plain don't see the sign. Sign's huge, they see the sign, officer, but he handled himself very well and very professional. And I heard him interacting with some of the violators out there that were trying to give him every excuse, and so, thanks, Chief, for doing that, and thank him for staying on top of that, because it's one thing that really upsets me, is those people that pull in there, and then you get somebody in a van that can't park and get in there, so that's all I have, thank you.
I figured there was a punchline coming, like you got a tip. No, no, you didn't get a tip.
Oh yeah, Garth Brooks is coming to Commerce City.
See, he's not gonna let me give him a hard time, 'cause he knew it was coming.
Mr. Mayor, just a-
No, that's great.
Just a quick clarifying question, tell me again the resident speeding issue?
I had two people email me from the Outlook subdivision, which is north of 120th-
Yep.
And they were saying that eastbound traffic from Commerce, or from Chambers towards Buckley was becoming excessive and dangerous, when they were trying to pull out to get onto 120th.
You mean eastbound 120th?
Yes, sir.
Eastbound 120th.
Yeah, got it. Sorry, the mayor confused me there.
Yeah, you blame it on me, Garth Brooks. Any other administrative council business come before us tonight? Seeing none, we're gonna go into reports, and we have an executive session. So city manager, reports?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did send the city manager update out last Friday. One important update, an important city council initiative was the ability for taxpayers in the city to be able to file their tax returns online, make their filings online. That system went live at the end of last week, so that's an exciting move forward for us, and taxpayers have already started to file, file returns online. So within a matter of hours, folks are starting to use the system, so very exciting step forward for us. Secondly, though not in the city manager update, you noticed our temporary setup with the projector tonight, our overhead projector quit working this afternoon. The good news is, starting this Friday, new technology improvements are scheduled to be installed and will take most of the rest of the month. So by the next time you have a regular city council meeting in this room on February 4th, the new technology should be installed and operational.
Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I just wanted to wish you all a Happy New Year and Happy Holidays, 'cause I missed you the last time, but wanted to note that I have a couple study session items scheduled for January and early February regarding items that came from my evaluation regarding training for city council, because of the crush of items on the study sessions, including the addition of the Oil and Gas, the task force discussion next week. I was gonna propose moving those to February, March time, or later February or March timeframe, make sure there's no objection to that. So just wanted to let you know about that. The other thing is, the assistant city attorney recruitment is ongoing, we're still receiving applications, but have a number of really great-looking applicants, so, thank you.
Thank you. And you know, I figured I'd start the new year off right. Number one, Happy New Year, everyone, but I did not prepare a report tonight, first time in 20 years, or whatever it's been. I do have one item I wanna shout out, number one, to all of our staff that participated, and to the members of this council, and to the members of previous council, on the Five Projects in Five Years Initiative, to turn around and make good on our agreement to the residents for the 2K bond initiative, to have all of those projects finished within a five-year timeframe. Eagle, Eagle Point, thank you. I always just called it the Commerce City Rec Center, but Eagle Point Rec Center is now open to the public. If you haven't been there, we did open it on the 31st of December, make sure that we honored and met our promise to the residents. The facility looks great, I can't believe how nice, things like the therapy pool, the workout equipment that is now on the lower level, got to visit with a lot of folks on that day, the 31st, and we will be having a grand opening ceremony coming up in about a week. Next Tuesday. So anybody that'd like to be there, come out to Eagle Point Rec Center next Tuesday at what time?
It's at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Because space is limited, it is by invitation only.
Gotcha. So it's by invitation only, but if you reach out to the city manager, we'll see if we can't get you a pass to go try it out. See how I threw you under the bus there? So that's all I really had. I know we have a lot of things coming up, the Gaylord Hotel is open, they're starting to have events over there, there was a Christmas lights venue there. I did notice that Highlands Rec Park District had a big light display at Waterworld, they had to make a bunch of money, and all I could think about is, man, if we had something like that in the parking lots over here for Dick's Sporting Goods, we could back traffic up out onto Quebec, too. They did a great job, and they had to do pretty well, and it provided a venue. One of the things that we all know, we got a lot of complaints about, is the lack of Christmas decorations. I didn't say holiday decorations, I said Christmas decorations in Commerce City. So I know that's a topic that the council's gonna take up, whether we do some more lighted decorations or not in the near future, but I think it's great to, to support our police department and still support some Christmas decorations in our community. That is the end of my report. If anybody has anything they'd like to add to it, now's the time. Mr. Wardiola?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna give a shout-out, a couple things, to Adelante. I attended their Tres Reyes, which is the Three Kings Celebration, in the Mexican culture, Latin American culture. They do gifts on January 6th, 'cause that's when the Three Kings came to see Jesus. So a lot of, in the culture, you'd open your presents, or in my family, we'd open one present that day, and then the rest on Christmas Eve. But they served over when I left, and they still needed one more round at 1:30. Over 500 of our kids went through and got one gift, there was plenty of food, there was entertainment, there was booze, so it was an amazing, amazing event. It was held at our Our Lady Mother Church. This is the second year that I attended this event. During that event, also, Adelante signed an MOU with the Colorado Minority Business Department for the state. They'll be Derby Resource Center, working with Michelle, three days a week, 9 to 2, which is an awesome opportunity for our minority business owners in Commerce City to get to know the new tax program we have, and just help them, help them out doing different things in the business sector. So I'll be emailing staff about a couple of things that I think we should be involved with, and it's just a great organization. Adelante is really doing some great things in this event. Next year, they expect it to be bigger, and we'll announce it to council, so, good job, Adelante.
Thank you, Mr. Wardiola. Mr. Madera?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on the Eagle Point Rec Center, been there a couple times, and the facility looks amazing, the staff has been great. My nephew forgot his phone there one night, and they put it in the safe and kept it there for him to pick up the next day, but yeah, you know, everything about the experience, there's still some things that need to be tied up, but, you know, for it being open for, you know, just about a week or so, it's in great condition, and, you know, it's just an overall delightful experience going there, so, kudos to the staff at the Rec Center and everyone who, you know, contributed to making it a possibility on the tight line, so, thank you, guys.
You know, I think we need to expand on that, it's amazing how much the staff did on those projects. And Michelle Halsted, no longer with us, but kudos to her. These guys, Roger and Troy, and everybody underneath of Mr. McBroom, the effort was tremendous to make sure that we followed through, but there's one thing I can tell you that I think is most important, when you go to the voters to get money to do something, you need to follow through with your promise. Otherwise, the next time, they won't trust you, and trust is a huge deal in a community. So I wanna thank the council for staying on top of it, making sure that we honored the promise that we gave our residents. All right, Mr. Wardiola, last time.
Yes, sorry about this. Sorry about, but over the weekend, or over the week, Sergeant Major Robertson passed away, and Sergeant Major, for those who didn't know, worked at Adam City High School from 1979 to 1995. So we got communications out to the community about some of the services. Something I'd like to see is how we could honor him at our Memorial Day Parade this upcoming year.
Did you make a motion to?
So if I have to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to honor Sergeant Major Robertson for his service to our country and to our community in Commerce City. I know a lot of alumni, fellow Commerce Cityans who took ROTC, were in his programs to this day. You know, Lieutenant Colonel Harry, who does an amazing job right now, still, you know, they named the firing range after him, there's a picture and a plaque after him, so I'd like to do a motion to honor him during our Memorial Day Parade this year in 2019.
Is there a second? Mr. Madera?
Second.
A motion and a second to honor Major Robinson, who was there while I went to school at Adam City, knew him very well, great person- Great person, did a lot for kids during his tenure. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Gives staff direction, so something will be taken care of at the parade to honor Sergeant Major.
And if you guys wanna see, just, I mean, I just found out a bunch of stuff about what he did as, you know, one of the first African-Americans to do what he did. It's amazing. I have that, and I could send it out to you guys, so you could read up on his accomplishments, not only in Commerce City, but in this country. So, thank you.
Well, and you know how many young kids that he was able to get them to realize what it meant to serve, and what it did for those kids that went through Adam City, to have the opportunity to have his leadership? A lot of my classmates went into the service because of him, and they're better off for it. So, great man, did a lot for our community, and he deserves recognition. All right, Mr. Douglas, last time.
Thank you. This is, just before, well, December last meeting, regular meeting, just got a letter for one more year for the National League of Cities Infrastructure and Transportation Committee, and then also on the Real Equity and Leadership Committee also. This is all about racism and bringing things to the surface. There's the iceberg theory, and the iceberg theory is, there's a top of the iceberg, which everybody sees, but there's, but the base and the bottom of the iceberg needs to be brought to the surface. So, we have made strides, but we still have a lot of work.
All right. Now, seeing no other reports, I'm open for a motion to go into the executive session. Yes, sir?
We'd actually like to take a moment and do a short public presentation on both topics, because it could be based on some direction from council. One or both may not be necessary.
It's fine with me. Roger, fire away.
Thank you, sir. Let me bring up the presentation, and hopefully it shows up on your machine as well.
The fewer executive sessions we have to have, the better off we are.
All right. Some of these got moved around. Let me make sure that, nope, it's not the right one. Gotta find it back. All right, so this is regarding the relocated Bell Creek Boulevard. There's, does this show up on your screens? Okay, good. All right. So, basically, I'm gonna review two options for you. One is the, basically, to convert that leftover right-of-way and street section to a parking lot, and the other option is to vacate and turn that property back over to the adjoining property owner. And the reason they're interested in it would allow them to expand their commercial lot. So, basically, we need to obtain your direction. So, I have a map here that shows up, and the lot that's highlighted with the blue outline is the commercial lot that's still owned by the Inverness property people. Adjoining that, just to the west, is the old right-of-way. Now, that has been moved to the west further, and that shows up on the following. This is the relocated street section and the relocated intersection at 104th. So, this portion that is left over is what is the subject of the discussion this evening. The proposal from the developer on the south side of the street is, who moved the intersection, is to convert that piece of road section into a parking lot, and the purpose of that is basically twofold. One is, he has observed a number of people parking on the Bell Creek Boulevard and riding the bus. So, I contacted RTD and asked if they were interested in having a parking lot. Well, sure, they are, but they're not willing to pay anything for it. So, the result would be, it would have to be city, you know, continuing to maintain that and have ownership. So, that raises some issues. There are a few advantages. One would be, it would provide 12 to 15 parking spots, but also, the motivation for the developers, it would save him the cost of demolition of the old street section. There are disadvantages. Number one is that the Bell Creek Metro District Board of Directors opposes this. They're strongly opposed to it, I'll put it that way. It also would increase the city liability exposure and maintenance costs. On the flip side, it doesn't help Inverness sell the commercial parcel. They're interested in expanding that commercial parcel, so it's a little bit bigger, so that they can get more commercial interest in it. And then there is a risk of challenge, because, again, Bell Creek Metro District is very much interested in this subject. So, this shows the diagram that I received from the Inverness people, shows their proposed expansion of the lot, and basically, it comes down to, again, for them, Bell Creek would support this, it would allow them to expand their lot, and then it also does not expose the city liability or maintenance cost. So, if it would enhance their ability to sell that property, it would enhance the city's revenue potential as well. It does also provide enhanced landscaping opportunity around that pedestal sign that Bell Creek Metro District has at the entrance. The disadvantages, it wouldn't provide the parking spots for RTD riders, and it would cost the developer additional money. So, in terms of the level of effort, it, there are, you know, fairly significant levels of difference in terms of the level of effort that would be involved with this, but at the same time, I'm not sure that we, you know, I'm not sure which direction you wanna go, so that's why I'm coming to you for direction.
And just to further clarify, if you wish to see it converted to a parking lot, there may be a need for an executive session to provide us some direction in our negotiations with the developer across the street on how it's converted. If your desire instead is to see the property vacated and turned back over to the adjoining property owner, there would not be a need for an executive session.
Couple of things. I'll start off with, I think the Metro District folks were the same ones that were in here complaining about the road being moved. And that's frustrating to me, because we continue to say it's gonna be fixed up just as nice as the other entrance was and everything else. I'm in full benefit and support of expanding the size of that corner for commercial development, because it enhances the opportunity to get in, to sit down restaurant, some other things that are needed. I don't like to be cornered or threatened, especially when you were opposing us moving the road, and now you want the land that you were complaining that we were moving the road for. You know, so, it's one of those things, kinda be careful about how things come about. Secondly, there's a horrible problem with people parking along Bell Creek Boulevard, and you can't turn out of, like, the Taco Bell, McDonald's, because there are cars in the way, you can't see oncoming traffic. So, my position is, give it back to the Metro District if they can find an alternative for some of that parking, because we're gonna have to put up, and you know I've been opposed to putting up no parking signs, but that corridor right there, we're gonna cause some accidents if we don't start dealing with the parking. And so, if the Metro District wants to partner with us about how we're gonna deal with the parking issues, and they want to expand the size of that lot to benefit them, I'm all for a partnership. The third thing is, is we need to work out how we're gonna deal with it. I don't know as though Hammer needs to be solely responsible for the demolition. Maybe we participate with him on how that gets demolished. But, I hate that we end up in a position where we were yelled at about something, and now the same organization wants us to give us some, give them, give them something, you know? So, there's a few things we gotta deal with. Parking, I'm all for expanding the size of the lot to improve commercial opportunities, but the Metro District needs to be a player, and I think we need to work with Hammer on how it gets tore up, if that's the direction of council. Mr. Wardiola?
If I may just note something about the vacation. By operation of law, if the city vacates right-of-way, it would automatically vest in the adjacent property owner. The extent of that is something we still have to research here, but there is an opportunity, I think, for negotiation with them, and it would go, that owner of the property is not the Metro District, so the property would go to the...
Inverness.
Yeah, it would probably be to Inverness, whoever owns that property, who's the party that dedicated it in the first place.
Sure, which would benefit the Metro District, because taxes, it's all relative.
And then, another clarification, and Robert and Roger, correct me if I'm wrong. If it's to be vacated and that pavement is to be removed, there's no further negotiation with Hammer required. It's already provided as part of Hammer's contract to redo the intersection. There would only be some negotiation with Hammer if it's to stay as a parking lot.
I just was saying, we need to do our best to work with whatever we need to get that annexed. Mr. Wardiola?
So, I've received numerous emails and calls about this, and that area is strongly, strongly opposed to making it a parking lot. Living there, trying to turn when it wasn't even a parking lot, it was, I mean, we talked about the no parking signs, because you can't see anything, and it's not our residents that are parking there, it's people driving in and parking along that side. So, it's not even Bell Creek residents that park along that side. They're still doing it towards the car wash now, because that's blocked off. So, I would be strongly opposed of making it a parking lot, and how's that gonna look going into a community when you see the first thing is a parking lot? That's just not something that that community wants, or myself. I think you're right in the fact that it has to be a partnership with that Metro District and that commercial company to give them that. It's only gonna enhance Bell Creek and Commerce City as a whole to add. My only question is, there are rumors out there with the Metro District that we can't build on that, because there's lines underground. So, I know that's a big concern for the Metro District and the commercial, that we cannot build there, it's just gonna be an empty lot. So, if you guys clarify that, but I know I'm strongly opposed to putting a parking lot at an entrance of Bell Creek. It just wouldn't benefit anybody. So, I would go with the advantages of transferring it to commercial property, but I think we have to come down and sit down with the Metro District, come with some solutions. Parking is gonna be horrible everywhere, but a parking lot is not the answer at Bell Creek.
You are correct. There are utilities under that old street section, and so, that would have to be covered by, basically, easements, you know, wherever the property is transferred to.
It is possible to use that as private parking lot, provided those easements are there to allow access to the utilities. They just couldn't build structures over it.
Right, right.
They could use a commercial, if they built something there, that could be their parking lot, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, so it wouldn't impact development, it just, it would impact the footprint of the building. As long as it's still accessible, if there's a repair necessary, there'd be an easement. All right, let's see here. Mr. Madera?
Have we contacted the developer there? Are they, would they have any plans to build anything there, or would it just be, you know, an empty lot? Well, the developer I was talking about is the one on the south side of the 104th who moved the intersection. That was part of the settlement agreement between the city and him. He has, he is the one that proposed converting it to a parking lot. Now, if you're talking about the Inverness people who own the vacant lot, they're the ones who submitted this diagram that shows the expansion of that commercial lot, basically, by incorporating this old right-of-way.
It's my understanding Inverness does have interest in doing that.
They do, yes.
Now, can I ask you a clarified question? Based on the size of that lot, from an economic development perspective, does that increase the parking to a standard that would meet for sit-down restaurant versus just another fast food?
That, I couldn't answer off the top of my head.
It looks like it expands quite a few spots that maybe it can meet that need, and so, I guess where I'm going is, if that's the case, and we decide to do away with it and give it back to that property owner instead of making a parking lot, use it to our advantage and try to, try to use our Economic Development Department and some incentive to push for a sit-down restaurant on that hard corner.
There's a, there's space for 71 parking spaces, Mayor, and it's a 7,000-square-foot building.
Yeah, I think, I think that would meet the need of at least a small restaurant. The last thing is, with 7-Eleven right there, is to see another gas station pop in on that corner and take advantage of that, that empty corner there. When we have such a need for restaurants in the area, I think we could use some of that negotiations to our advantage as part of giving that back to that piece of property. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Looking at this diagram, since we don't have one here available on our iPads, it's also to set back as far as the road for future expansion of 104th. That would impede on future expansion, right? So, there would not be more area needed to the north?
No, I think we've already widened that intersection up to that point, when we did the expansion of Highway 85 and 104th to begin with. So, that particular section, I don't think would be impacted for future right-of-ways beyond that.
Just a quick, this hasn't gone under any staff review for the city's development standards. It's merely an initial concept by Inverness to show that it looks like it would be big enough to do something productive with it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, and this isn't here, might as well weigh in on this. It's unfortunate this intersection had to move the way it did. Just in the moving parts here, I understand as far as the property to the south, that would make that more of an attraction, but it's unfortunate we had to go through this, knowing years ago, this intersection shouldn't have been put in in the first place, because it's so close to Highway 85 and 104th. But I would be more towards doing the commercial property instead of doing a parking lot.
And I see Dale sitting in the audience, once a banker, always a banker, probably looks at that going, golly, that'd be a great pad for a bank. But we need a restaurant. All right, anyone else have any comments to give direction to the staff so that they know whether we want a parking lot or we want it to go expand the size of the lot? Brian?
Just some additional direction. It sounds like from most of the comments, council is leaning towards vacating that leftover right-of-way so it can be used for development purposes. If council were to take that action, I would recommend that you take that action tonight, to send it in that direction. An executive session wouldn't be necessary.
Perfect. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Wardiola?
A motion that we go to the direction of vacating for a commercial property for future development in that area.
All right. For direction, for staff direction, Mr. Davis?
I'll second that motion.
All right. I have a motion and a second, to direct staff to pursue vacation of the right-of-way, to expand the size of the commercial lot, with partnership and negotiations with the Metro District and Inverness. I believe that's acceptable to the motion maker in second, and to not pursue a parking area for 10 to 15 cars, or whatever it's stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried.
Roger.
Next item. See how I threw that in there for you? All right, taking care of you.
The second issue is regarding the trash pickup. We have a contract that's been in place for four and a half years. We have a contract that's been in place for four and a half years, and the contract holder, Waste Management, has suggested that we extend the contract by one year, and normally we would go out to bid, so the question before council is, do you want to extend the contract or do you want to go out to bid? So, I'll give you a little bit background. The original contract was bid out and Waste Management won that, and that was effective from March 1, 2015, and it expires at the end of 2019. So, we would need to have your direction now if we're gonna go out to bid because that takes some time to get it out on the street and give companies an opportunity to respond. The procurement policy calls for bidding contracts every five years unless there's an exception, and you're the body that would approve an exception if you so wished. Services provided to 16,370 residences, and that costs 1.86 million per year. It started at $8.89 per household per month, and it, under the contract, it adjusts up but is not to exceed 4% per year. And so, using that Consumer Price Index for Denver, the price is now at $9.52 per house per month. Just as a point of reference, currently I'm paying $33 per month in Westminster, so I'm about to change providers, however, that's a side note. They invoice us monthly, and the contract is subject to annual appropriation. They do pay the city a monthly fee of 5% on charges for disposal paid at a landfill, and that's because the landfill is not located within Commerce City, and we have a landfill located within Commerce City. We may, I'm sorry, we may terminate the contract with 14-day written notice. So, that's the background. We come to the questions, do you want to go out to bid this year, or do you want to extend the contract by one year? The reasons for extending would be to avoid startup costs and rollout issues, and it also would allow Public Works to return to full staffing. And as I mentioned before, it does need an exception to the procurement policy. And then if you did want to extend it, then the question is, you know, what do you want out of the extension? And that really would be subject to an executive session to provide direction to negotiators. So, there are some pros and cons. Extending the contract would allow program consistency because the issues do decrease every year as the provider gets more and more experienced. We do have a good working relationship with the current provider, Waste Management, and, you know, they work with us in working through the issues. And we could potentially avoid or lessen the impact of a increase in the cost of recycling, and that's because of basically the last year or so upheaval in the recycling market due to China changing the rules in terms of what they accept for recycling. The cons of extending the contract are that we could miss the opportunity to explore better, you know, better pricing through competition. There are pros to rebidding the contract. One would be an opportunity to explore the benefits offered by a different hauler, and it also would make the haulers compete against each other to get the best deal. There are cons to rebidding the contract, and that is, again, if it changed haulers, then the residents have to learn new rules of a different program, and then there's invariably rollout challenges that occur. But it also could bring a higher cost than the current contract just by extending the current contract. So, really, those are the questions. Do you want to go out to bid this year? If so, we'll hop right on it, or do you want to extend the contract by a year?
I'll start it off. You know, there was a point in time, and I was explaining this to the city attorney and to Brian earlier, where we were going out to bid every couple of years. We had two companies that were national companies here in Commerce City. One was BFI and Waste Management. And every time we'd, we'd go out to bid, Waste Management would come in a little lower than BFI, and then BFI would have the opportunity to negotiate less than Waste Management, and BFI always ended up with contract. I didn't like the way business was done then. So, I said, no more of that, we're gonna go to sealed bids, whoever is the low bidder gets the contract. Waste Management got the contract, and they've been the provider ever since. I have nothing against either provider of that national standard that we have in Commerce City, and now it's Republic and Waste Management. Waste Management has done an outstanding job. I get very few complaints about trash pickup in Commerce City. I like the totes. And it doesn't matter what provider we have, recycling is changing nationwide because of the contamination rate that we have here in the U.S. and what the standards are that China's now accepting. 99% of our recyclables are ending up in a landfill because they don't meet the cleanliness of that percentage that China is requiring. So, we're gonna see that regardless, but we're talking about a $2 million a year contract for five years. That's a lot of taxpayer dollars, and like I said, nothing against Waste Management, but for transparency issues, after five years of having a contract worth $2 million a year, I think that it's important that we go back to bid. Waste Management could be that provider, and you're right, it could cost more, but it could cost less too. And that's important that we, we go to bid for a reason, and that's to get the best cost for our residents. And if we could extend it and not have an increase, I don't know why, we would have a bid that would be more. But out of fairness to the companies in our community and to our residents to make sure that we are vetting the best price after five years to extend it for a sixth. If it, it used to be that we'd do a two- or three-year contract and allow for a year or two extension. We're talking about five years. I think it's, it's really good and healthy to go back to bid and get the best price for our residents, plus it shows transparency and it shows that we're not tied to any one company, that we're trying to use the market to be the best beneficial server to our community. And so, my preference is go back to bid. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you on that. I think that competition is good, especially in a high dollar amount like this. I'm familiar with both of these services. I had the opportunity to tour the landfill here in Commerce City, and I think that's a benefit, especially when we're, we're bidding, that we have a landfill right here in our own town, that they should at least have the opportunity to bid on that along with Waste Management. And I don't think it would be fair to them if we just extended this without at least their input, at least their, their attempt to, to try to explain their services to us. So, I would also, I would agree with you, Mayor.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes. I was on council back then when we went through that process, and I don't remember being a sealed bid. I know there was, there was certain options, and we didn't know based on those options that were prevented, that were presented to us, who the operators were, which was really good because it turned out that who we thought it was, wasn't, just how things were presented at, when it came to bidding. And I did like that process. And the, we didn't have the opportunity to put in mulch or organic waste at that time. I know it was also a, came to, the totes were provided, 15-gallon totes, and we're gonna go in 96-gallon trash can recyclables, which everybody loves, and then the opportunity for people to pay extra if they want to have more trash to throw away or recycle. And that program has worked out really good too. So, they worked the kinks out. I understand about the, about the year extension, and the last time we came into this situation was, it was later in the game, and we were looking at doing the bid then, and we were, we were told better off not to do the bid and just extend the contract and then look at next year to do the bid. I understand cost has gone up. I know we were paying over $2 million a year prior to this contract, and then this got reduced. We saved us $900,000 by going to this option. And it didn't cost the residents a penny as far as trash cans, they were provided, both 96-gallon trash and recycle. And so, to see, to see it has gone up, but still under the $2 million, we still are saving money. That's a hard decision if we just extend it for one year and then prepare ourselves towards the end of this year to make the bid. I'd like to hear what, what are the options as far as when we're gonna, when would this go out to bid? Would this be in the next three months, next 30, 60 days? What's the timeline?
I don't have any exact timeline, but I know that we would need to start preparing the materials to get that out this quarter, and so I would anticipate that by June, we would, I'm kinda looking to our new Public Works Director to see if he wants to contradict anything I'm saying, but I would think by June, we would need to have the bids, you know, in process, if not in hand.
I think that's about right, Roger. The goal, the objective
Come on up.
I said out in the work plan is to either
While, while Joe's coming up to the microphone, I do think we would need some input from city council as well to help us structure that RFP because there will be some options.
Could I add to your Yeah. Consistent with the work plan, the objective would be to either renew the existing contract or hire a new contractor on it before the end of September. So, backing that out, probably 90 to 120 days before that, we would have to get the package out, requesting invitations for bids and solicitation.
Thank you.
So, with that, if the contract ends this March, right?
No, it ends in December at the end of the year.
Okay, gotcha. I missed that. We started the first one in March. Okay, gotcha. So, goes to end of December. Okay, that makes sense. Okay. Yeah, I would, and just want to hear some more information on that, but I could see, you know, we're ahead of the ballgame now than we were last time, so a kudos to the staff for, for putting that out and presenting to us at this time in January.
Mr. Madera.
My only question is gonna be, in terms of level of service, are we gonna have that written as part of the requirements under the RFP? So, when we put it out to bid?
I would anticipate, yes. We would start with the current level of service and set that as the baseline. But again, you know, once, once we start looking at different packages, that may necessitate, necessitate coming back to council for some guidance in terms of how we structure the bid documents.
And, no, I see the reasons that you got listed here, but is there any other reasons for extending the, the current contract?
I'm not aware of any at this point.
Would it be a burden to go out to bid this year?
Well, it's part of the work plan, and so we anticipated that that was going to be what staff would be working on this year. So, we've planned for it. The only downside is we're, we're still somewhat short in terms of staffing in the Public Works Department, but again, we've figured out ways to cope with that in the past, and we would do the same thing with this. In terms of workload, you know, it will take a person working, you know, a significant amount of time on pulling together the options for your consideration and then, you know, assembling the bid package and getting that out the door. But again, like you said, we anticipated that was going to be this year. The only reason we've brought to you the question of whether to offer an extension of one year is the contract provider suggested that to us and said, you know, how about? And so, well, that's a question really for city council to answer, not staff.
Thank you. Mr. Wardiola.
Yeah. I'm in agreeance with Steve and the rest. I think it's a good thing to get out to bid and give some of our local companies an opportunity to at least bid for it. We always say, we try to promote city businesses, and again, I think it's at least them having the opportunity to bid, I think it's something we need to do.
Competition is good. Not only that, I like the transparency piece. Our residents know, we're constantly trying. It would be easy for us to just extend the bid and write it for another year, but is that fair to everyone else, especially the industry and our residents, based on, maybe there's a potential price savings? So, again, we're at a point where you need a, you need a consensus and direction.
Well, the other way, the other way to approach it tonight is, we would proceed to bid it out to start in January of 2020 unless council gives us some other direction. So, you don't have to take any action tonight.
All right.
If your desire is to have us bid it out.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, we could take some action and give some direction one way or the other. Is there a motion? Mr. Madera.
I move to
Direct the staff.
Direct staff to put this out to bid.
Is there a second, Mr. Wardiola?
Second, a motion.
A motion as second to direct staff to pursue bidding for our trash contract the end of the year 2019. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. May the best provider win. All right, we alleviated two executive sessions, and now it's my pleasure to say if there's no further business to come before this city council this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for watching, and thanks for those who came in.